Welcome to everybody. Time to start our meeting. The meeting's set, this is June 2nd, Thursday, at 3:00 PM in the Commissioners' Court Room, which is 210 West Gaver Street in Corinth City. Welcome to everybody. There's a quorum present, there are three members present and two absent. The absent two are James Rosales and Shelby Duke, and the other three are me and the two Commissioners who are here. Yes, that everybody stand and bow your heads for the hope and prayer remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Our only Father, we thankful for the many blessings that you've bestowed on us. Be with each of us, help us to be better people, better Commissioners, better Judge, better citizens of the state. Stay with us each day. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
P.C., please. Item five on the agenda is discussed, approved, disapproved, possible action by the county with respect to the County, Corinth County Jail facility and the allegations by Union Pacific Railroad of an encroachment on its property in the alter was Jeff Chetman?
Yes. Thank you. So when we last met to discuss this issue, I guess in the middle of the meeting, I represented to y'all that I would call a railroad representative and find out what their story was and kind of try to work through this issue. I did that. I spoke to that representative, Rebecca Hoffman. She and I talked about the encroachment, railroad's justification for their assertion that we're encroaching, and the presentation that we saw from the surveyor and civil engineer. The railroad's perspective is that this civil engineer and/or the surveyor incorrect. They believe that the railroad has recorded with the federal government a map that depicts where their property right-of-way lines and ownership boundaries are, that the meets-and-bound description from 1986, if I'm remembering the date correctly, that meets-and-bound description is incorrect, and that whoever did that description, whoever placed the pins in the ground to identify the boundaries as identified in that description, did not do a correct job in staking out the edge of the property that was owned by the railroad before that time, currently to this Rebecca Hoffman told me that she believed that the surveyor, I don't know if she said she spoke to him or had reviewed some work product of his, but that the surveyor simply didn't do a thorough enough search in finding the boundaries of their own property. Now, I don't know definitively yet whether she's right or whether the surveyor's right, but it does give rise to some potential action and possibly some litigation, either against the surveyor or against the railroad. And so I have an executive session item on the agenda for us to talk about that because whenever there's contemplative litigation, we're allowed to meet to confer about it strategically based on the county's rights and that the county might want and be willing to assert in a closed session. But for the open session, I wanted to make sure that I gave you the information that I do know. I don't know yet how much the railroad would want for the land, but Ms. Hoffman did tell me that she'd be willing, the railroad would be willing to sell it to us, as was indicated to us by Mr. Timrak when he spoke to us based on what the city's doing. But again, as he represented, she echoed that if we did buy from them, they would want an easement to allow them access to reestablish that track in the future if they so desire. And if they did that, as she said, that would necessarily require the destruction of at least the back half of the jail, which is a problem. So I didn't investigate with her the possibility of a limited easement or a less than 50-foot easement. She just said that's what they would initially ask for. We do have the potential to condemn the land and take it for our public use. That would involve litigation and the risks and the law regarding that is something I'd like to discuss with you in closed session, but it's something the county could contemplate. The county could also enter into negotiations to purchase the land directly from Union Pacific and negotiate with them about the scope, the breadth, and the length into perpetuity or otherwise of the easement they're requesting. So those are the options, that's what I know. My initial evaluation is that the railroad's probably correct about the property lines. My problem with the 1986 meets-and-bound description is that it was made by an unknown entity with respect to the securing of a promissory note. It wasn't actually a deed, it didn't actually transfer title to anything, it simply assigned an interest in land. If you go back behind that, earlier in time, there doesn't appear to be, at least not from what I was hearing from the presentation last time or from the railroad representative, there doesn't appear to be a deed with the meets-and-bound description identifying the railroad's land. There just appears to be what are, according to Ms. Hoffman, traditional railroad overlay maps, which show the existence of the right-of-way with the center line of the track, which in this case, because the track is gone, would be identified by the culvert. And then it simply has a map showing 50 feet to either side of the center line of the railroad's property without a descriptor. And if you measure 50 feet from that culvert, you're into a swale. So...
Into the swale or into the Sallyport?
Well, I haven't measured, but you're definitely into the swale. You might actually be into the Sallyport. I haven't measured 50 feet, but I know that if I'm standing in the back of the jail property, that culvert's not 50 feet from where I'm standing. So it's closer. And the railroad property goes back to the late 1800s, 1890 something. There was no descriptors, it was just the establishment of the line at 50 feet either side. So apparently they had maps on file with the federal government which show where that line is with the overlay of the boundaries on either side, north and south. And apparently our surveyor didn't know to look there or did not look there. So that's what I know now. It would appear that the county's next action would be to choose how to go about acquiring that property, so we can protect the jail from ultimately being unusable. Right now, Union Pacific is not threatening litigation against us. If there's contemplative litigation, it'll be litigation that we would bring in either direction with respect to the county's interests. I don't believe there's a risk that Union Pacific will sue us to remove the encroachment. I think they're willing to work with us, it's just a matter of whether we want to accept their offer or take an alternate avenue of course resolution. Any questions right now?
Well, is any of their claim predicated upon holding the land against everybody, that they've acquired some kind of title, or is it all totally on the survey that was done at a time when surveys were traditionally not accurate? I've seen many of them that were not accurate in this county.
Right.
In the 50 years I've practiced law up here.
Yeah, I think what they're saying is the survey that we used, but from the 80s, was not accurate. I don't know that the railroad has any, the railroad doesn't have a survey. They just have their overlay maps, where they've overlaid the track and the right-of-way with the map of the area. And that's what we looked at, that they've given us in that packet of email that I sent you, Judge. That's all they have. So what they're claiming is that that survey from the 80s was in fact wrong and overdid the survey initially, staked it out improperly, and that our reliance on that incorrect survey is to our detriment.
Any idea what started Union Pacific's interest in this again? Is it because of the city park and that?
I think it's because the city approached them and wanted to buy part of their land to then do the beautification project. And then when the railroad was looking at it, I think they probably had some either come out or look at surveys and maps of the area and realized there was now a jail sit on the property.
Just how coincidental for Corinth County, Murphy's Law, after the fact.
I don't know for sure that that's how their attention was drawn to the issue, but I think it was. I don't think it was anything that the city said, hey, by the way, these guys encroach. I think the city said, we want to buy your land.
And they started looking.
Of course, they have due diligence, they discovered the error.
Of course, that was after the city and the county had squabbled a little bit about who owned the land, and the city was not able to establish that they owned it and the county didn't. And so they then went to the railroad to buy from the railroad.
That timing sounds right.
I wasn't involved in that, but that's the sense I make out of it.
Yeah, and I don't know when the city began their conversation with the railroad.
Indeed.
But I think that it's that conversation that is what alerted the railroad to the issue.
Have we heard anything in terms of what they feel the property is worth based on their conversation with the city?
No, I have not heard anything from them as far as what they would want. They said they're amenable to doing that transaction. It would probably be in our best interest to have that land appraised and give them an offer based on appraisal, rather than letting them tell us what they want for it. And just by way of information, if we do want to go the route of contemplating and investigating whether, excuse me, it makes sense to begin a condemnation proceeding, under the statute, we have an obligation to make a good fair market value offer. We would need an appraisal to establish that anyway. So as a threshold issue, I think it's wise for the county to authorize an appraiser to go out there and conduct an appraisal of that particular tract, just that we have enough information to work with to establish and evaluate what the risks are financially with either direction.
Somewhere they had, the railroad had a survey, because in my lifetime, I remember at one point, as these tracks began to be pulled up, he probably remembers these two, but they came through the country and took sections of rail that was cut off, and they marked, just like highway parks and marks, and put their little pyramids up, they marked their right-of-way. And it wasn't always at the corner post, but somewhere along the property.
She indicated there were markings that are out there that should indicate to a surveyor that it is railroad property, but she didn't indicate specifically to me exactly where those locations were.
I doubt that they ever surveyed the external boundaries, as you say. Their survey probably is the center line, and then they worked off of that entirely. I doubt personally, just what I've seen and what little I know, they probably had a center line survey, and then everything is just...
And that's what she gave, that's what she has, she told me they have, is the center line mapping grid that shows where the center line of the track is. Whether the track exists there or not now doesn't change the fact that you take that marking, you measure 50 feet either direction. And as the track curves, the boundary curves. So that's what I know.
How much property do you tell me?
Well, it's probably, I don't know, I haven't measured it. I mean, it's the entire length of the rear of the jail property that extends to the edge of our fence line, which is the end of the swale, which is essentially abutting the railroad embankment. So it's probably...
What rate?
Yeah, I really don't know. Lorraine, do you have an idea?
Yes, I don't have that whole world dimension on here. I'll have to look and see. It'd be 50 feet times the length of the back of the jail.
Less than 40. But, yeah, I was gonna say, it's not as huge amount as...
30 feet.
30 feet. 30 feet from the center.
Instead of 50.
Well, they own 50 feet from the center line, but our encroachment is 30 feet into their 50.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're 30 feet into.
Right, because we have 20 feet. Yes, our swale is approximately 20 feet.
That's the standard block. Most blocks are 300 feet and then, I think, 50 feet to the center. So it's about 30 by 30, or 30 by 325, something like that.
Yeah, so it's a third quarter.
I don't think the issue, Marius, is so much the amount of property. The thing that I think is distressing is the fact that they want to retain this easement in perpetuity in case they decided to reopen it, and there have been tracks reopened that have been closed for a period. And I mean, I don't know if this one ever will be, probably won't.
Yeah, I mean, that's the risk that we have to evaluate. Now, I don't know that there is a pressing demand for them to put a track there in the future. There may never be, in which case the easement would never be acted on, and we'd be perfectly fine for the entire lifespan of that facility. The concern is if they change their mind and they want to build a rail there for light rail funeral traffic between the valley and San Antonio, or whatever it might be. I mean, I don't know how they're gonna run the line. I mean, if they did that, maybe in 70 years, we have a jail that after 70 years would devalue us.
They can sell it to a pipeline company.
They could do that.
They can easement it to a pipeline company. There's any sort of thing that can be utilized beside railroad.
Right, we just don't, we don't know what their plans are for the future, and they're not gonna disclose this to us. They're gonna get the easement, at least they're gonna ask for it initially, to protect that interest, so they have the right to do with the line what they want in the future.
The comment was about when the city got involved in this, probably a year and a half ago, almost, time goes by so fast, maybe two years ago, when the city was talking to the railroad to buy by the piece of property behind the old Texaco depot, the beautification part on the west side of that street was taken into account. Then when we had the study done by UTSA as to what we could do with the park project and all that, it actually showed a walking trail that could possibly go across 123. So then they approached us about that we want to maybe kind of do the same thing that we did on the west side of that street. So that's kind of how the city got involved.
Well, we're not, I'm not probably any rocks, actually. We're just trying to figure out some way out of that difficult situation.
And, you know, it may be that the piece of land is such, is so small in relative comparison to, you know, what the railroad has, and we might evaluate the risk of them reestablishing a line as so low that the cost of buying that tract and giving them the easement isn't significant enough for the county to worry about. I mean, you know, I don't know what the cost is, I don't know what they're gonna want the easement, but I'm just laying out all the issues that I know to exist and the facts that they've told me. And if we have a jail facility that has a 70 to 100-year expected lifespan, and we believe that the risk of them reestablishing that line in the next 50 years or less is so low that we would have already gotten significant value out of that facility, that maybe it makes perfect sense to simply buy and give them easement. I just don't know.
Well, the other thing, and this is perhaps simplistic thinking, but if it takes in the swale and the drainage, I personally wouldn't get too excited about if it actually encroaches in, if they're 50 feet. We have encroached into their space with actual building structure, that kind of changes the dynamic of it.
Well, we can go up there and measure it to be exact, but if the swale is 20 feet wide, right, Lorraine?
Yeah, and then we're 20, 21 feet, it's possibly 20. I mean, the property curve's just a teensy bit, but at the narrowest point, it's about 20, and then you're 20 feet to the back of the actual Sallyport. We have 40 feet from, you know, to the actual structure.
So we should be...
We might lose the swale in Sallyport. We may not lose the actual jail. And if we lose the swale in the Sallyport 50 or 70 or 100 years in the future, we need to construct a new way to offload prisoners. We can do that.
I got you. So that's seeing that, if it's possible.
What about that radio tower?
The radio tower's another issue. The radio tower is in the railroad property. We, if there were an easement granted and there were a desire to act the easement, they would interfere with the tower's placement, we'd have to move or rebuild the tower.
So that's a little less than rebuilding.
It is.
It's about 15,600 square feet, I mean, approximately.
Yeah.
For 30 feet.
And that's probably about what it is.
Well, like I said, if we stay outside of the Sallyport, and particularly if we stay outside of the Sallyport with their property, then perhaps the easement, as you say, given the risk is not, or fighting, goes through it.
And I think that, just generally speaking, if we were to contemplate litigation and take that land under contract, you're gonna spend a little bit of money by the railroad. So, you know, that's not a cheap endeavor, because they're gonna wanna protect that easement, and whatever they have to do to do that, they'll do it.
I think their pockets might be available deeper now.
They're fairly deep. So, I don't know how we compare to the county, they're fairly deep. So, yeah, that's all the discussion I have on that particular item. Unless there are more questions.
Do we need to authorize an appraisal today?
I think you certainly can, if you're taking action. I think it'd be wise to do that, so you know we're talking about value ones.
We don't have to do that. I think that's a good idea, and I don't know how to choose an appraiser, but maybe we don't want to choose the same way that we use the...
I have a couple of appraisers that we use for property that I can contact and find out if they can do it, if they'd be willing to come down to Corinth to do it, if they have someone who may be out of Victoria or something that they work with, they'll do it better.
I know some too, but I don't want to get involved in that.
In that case, I would make a motion that we hired an appraiser to appraise the speeding rail property.
Is there any discussion? I would be curious about what criteria y'all intend to use, and I think we've gotta decide and go see to hire somebody. It's not easy. The best surveyor that was ever in this county is dead.
Well, we're talking about an appraiser, not a surveyor right now.
Well, they gotta have something to appraise.
Well, the appraiser will use the railroad, the appraiser, we use the railroad drawings at this point, in taking the railroad's word for it as far as ownership and boundaries. They might need a surveyor to help them establish, you know, the pins for that. But if you like, I can certainly bring back to the county some suggestions of two or three different appraisers and RPLSs they might work with, that y'all can review and make a decision on at that time.
I think that would make sense.
I can do that at the next meeting or the talking, whatever works best.
If you can get it together, I'd like to see it for the next meeting. If it's not enough time...
That should be fine.
If it's not that urgent today, I will draw my motion.
Well, with respect to the urgency, the railroad is not banging down my door to get a decision. I told the Hoffman West Oak tour probably two weeks ago that I expected it to be on the 31st, of course, now it's today, and said, I'll raise the issue with the county, and I'll get back to what we might want to be doing. And I can just call her the next week and tell her we're gonna get it appraised and kind of evaluate where we are in the value and get back to her.
He wants to... You're gonna bring us some proposals there.
I can do that.
Have we not voted on the...
No. He would draw his own.
Is there anything else we need to do on the...
I think on that item, we do not. If you would like, the next item, if you'd like to go into executive session, discuss the potential pathways that might result in litigation with Union Pacific or others regarding this issue, we don't have to do that. That's a likely to be...
You're talking about item six.
Item six, right.
In the closed session.
Right.
And as authorized in section 551.07, one of the Texas Government Code for Private Consultation with Attorney, and consultation with the county attorney, also recorded discussion of two items, item A, contemplative litigation relating to Union Pacific's assertion of an encroachment on the real property rights, and B, contemplative litigation against HMC and its surety for performance issues and default associated with the construction of the Corinth County Jail facility. Those were both authored, I believe, by Jeff Chetman. And with that said, we're ready to go into executive session.
Okay. Yep.
Okay, I was just waiting to make sure you're ready. We're, item seven on the agenda, discuss, approve, disapprove, status of Corinth County Jail construction project with HMC and granting HMC a certificate of partial substantial completion, now authored by Jeff Chetman.
Okay, thank you. At this point, the jail, at least the building inside of the jail is substantially complete. They're not substantially complete with the entire project, because they still have to finish the swale and the landscaping and some of the outside exterior work. But we're in the building, we're using it, we've taken beneficial occupancy of the building itself, and we have a certificate of occupancy from the city. So at this point, in working with Lorraine and what our contract says with respect to partial occupancy of the facility, we felt it was appropriate to issue a certificate of substantial completion to HMC granting the partial completion status. And the purpose of that is really twofold. One is, now that we're in the facility and using it, the warranties will begin to run for all the systems that are in place and installed by the contract. As those warranties begin to run for substantial completion per the contract, when we start to use the facility itself. We also have generated a punch list, and I understand it's 600 items long. HMC apparently is out there performing that punch list and working through those issues. Given that, given all that has happened, the fact that we're so substantially late on delivery and they're not yet complete with the entire facility, it's my recommendation that we give them the substantial completion certificate for the building itself, reserving final substantial completion for the entire project, and continuing to accrue or charge them LDs on a daily basis until they're finished with the entire project, it can be deemed substantially complete for the entire project. I have drafted for you and put into your packet a letter that I drafted for Mr. Kendall Finney, who's the owner of HMC, essentially telling him exactly what I just laid out to you, that we've given him substantial completion, the warranties begin to run, he still has an obligation to finish, and because he's not totally done, we're going to continue to assess LDs. By way of information, on the swale, which is the last major item that needs to be finished, that work has, at least appears to have stopped right now. I sent a letter to HMC and their surety a couple days ago, telling them that it appears from our perspective that work has stopped, and they need to finish it, or we will declare them a default and take whatever actually we need to take to get it done ourselves and charge that money against them or their surety. Kendall Finney responded to me late last evening that they are committed to the project, they are working on the punch list on the inside of the building, that the swale has stopped because they're waiting for a change order of additional $24,000, which incidentally they have not submitted to us or requested formally until yesterday's letter, in order to allow them to pay urban concrete to redo the site prep and dirt work they did prior to the work stoppage, which as you may recall, stopped because we had specified the change orders authorizing the aggregate of the concrete of one type, and they delivered to us a different type in a mock-up that we rejected. They're now... They are now trying to blame us for that error, at least in my opinion that's an error, and charge us $24,000. So, I need to respond to Mr. Finney. I think the appropriate response is the draft letter I have given you, which says, and I'll modify it slightly to respond to yesterday's letter, but basically says, you need to finish the entire job, we already gave you a change order to pay for that work, it wasn't our fault, you didn't do it on time, get it done, and we'll talk about, you know, your claims later, but we're still gonna charge you LDs. So, that's where the project stands. It's my recommendation that we have a motion for the court to approve the granting of partial substantial completion, along with the course of action that I've just now described in respect to working through this newest round of default to try and get them to produce work and finish the swale.
And for clarity, excuse me, and for clarity, I believe you mentioned that none of these involve paying them anything, this is strictly, we're keeping our residual.
Right.
As a holdback.
That's right. In fact, the next item on the agenda involves paying them less than they previously promised to pay because they haven't delivered the work they promised to deliver. So, we're, at this point, we're telling them, we're gonna continue to charge you damages for delay, we're in demand that you continue to perform. When you're done with the swale, then we'll pay you based on the change order they previously approved, but right now, we're not paying them anything in addition to what we already agreed to pay. In fact, we're paying a little bit less based on the next agenda item.
Would you, would you restate the motion? Where you can make police association.
Yeah, I would recommend that you make a motion to approve the granting of partial substantial completion to HMC and further authorize me acting as your opponent to direct HMC to, to cure its current defaults and perform the swell concrete work without any additional promise of compensation.
Summate.
And this is in furtherance of item seven on the agenda, is it not?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion from the court? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, all voting for a motion carried. Item eight on the agenda is to discuss approve disproved reduced payment for pay application number 29 to deduct cost for work not in place that has been previously approved based on projected production. Author was Jeff Chapman, Lorraine Daley.
Okay, so, as I just mentioned, we have previously approved the payment of pay application 29 for HMC. That pay application included certain funds, and I'll have Lorraine explain to you exactly how much in a minute, because I don't know the numbers, but it included certain funds based on a promise of, of work to be performed in the gap of time between when the pay was submitted and when the payment would be made. In other words, they gave us a pay application on the 15th or whatever it was, they promised in the next few weeks to finish a certain item of work which they didn't do. So, now, rather than paying them the fully approved pay applications, I believe it's, it's incumbent upon us under the contract to pay for work in place, it's properly accepted and billed, and so we should pay, pay up 29, but we shouldn't pay for that portion of that pay application that is, that is for work they never actually did. So, we should, what I'm asking, what Lorraine and I are asking the court to do is, is authorize a reduction of the previously approved payout to claw back essentially that amount of work they didn't do, pay for the difference, and let them know that when they finish it, they can bill us again for it.
Do you have the copy of that, Mrs. Taylor?
These are only you could get, because that if we approve this for signature. This is the revised one that we received back, and I'll get you guys a copy. Did y'all have a copy? Okay, okay. Great, okay. So, that's it, okay. Well, these are the ones that will be signed if they're approved, but essentially, as Jeff said, when we, when we approved it, they were projecting, they said the swale would be, would, the concrete would be placed already in the swale, and the sidewalk drains would be in place, and they would finish cleaning up the site. And so, with that, we approved it and asked the auditor's office to hold the check for us to verify work in place as we've done in the past. And once it became apparent that work was not gonna be completed by the time the check was ready, we asked them to revise their pay application to remove that portion of the work. So, it took the pay application down from $53,000, zero, or $53,000, $53,899 to $14,699.85. There was an $80 math error in the one that they sent us overnight last night that I corrected, and that's the one that we would like for you to approve. So, it's payout number 29 revised for work completed through April 30th, 2016.
Our motion that we pay here mills, that pays 29, $14,699.85.
How does this gonna affect our ability to get them to complete the job?
You wanna talk, this is for work that's already in place, we're still holding, we are still holding $583,825.64, and of that, $474,000 is retainedage. So, we have over $100,000 in work not complete, as well as $474,000 in retainedage.
I think that, to answer your question, the fact that they voluntarily gave us a revised pay application isn't knowledgeable by them that they don't, they didn't earn that money yet. And based on Kendall's letter to me, and they, they do appear to still be committed to finishing the job. They don't appear to be any more cooperative or skilled than they have been the whole time. So, while I think ultimately they've done good quality work in the jail, it's been a real struggle, I think it'll continue to be a struggle. I think that our response to Mr. Finney, that we're not gonna pay him an additional change order to redo the swale again, may be a problem, but again, we have $500,000 in contract balance that will let us finish that last $50,000 with the work on that swale, if that's what it costs, and I think we'll get the job done. I do think they'll continue to perform based on what they're showing and saying.
But all the little idiosyncrasies that continue to pop up that are problems within the jail that has supposedly been completed, that they keep being no fight of, and yeah, they're sending people out, but I'm just fearful, we give them too much, and they're gonna say, hey, we're closing up to breaking even, we're gone.
Well, first of all, they're not even close to breaking even, they're losing a bunch of money. But I think we do run the risk that at some point, they're gonna say, there's too much little stuff for us to continue to get our codes out here, we're gonna go ahead and abandon the project. I think that would mean that HMC is shutting down as an entity. That may involve bankruptcy, it may not, it may just involve them shutting down. If that happens, we have a significant amount of contract balance we can use to get the work done ourselves, and we know the subs that are out here, we could contact them directly and have them come out and help fix it, or we could contact different subs. Certainly, it wouldn't be easy, it'd be a big headache for us and probably the sheriff or the chief because they'd have to coordinate that work, but it would get done, and we have the money to pay for it. And we still have the bonding company that's, that's backing that up. If, if things were to happen dramatically with respect to, say, some sort of major performance defect that we discover now that we're in the building, it costs more than we have, we have the surety that's guaranteed that performance for at least up to one year. So, we do have security in place, my gut feeling tells me they're gonna continue to perform, and they'll slowly get it done.
Okay, maybe I didn't understand this correctly, and I'm not drawing a segment per se, but if I understand this correctly, we have already approved a payment of 50-plus thousand dollars.
Yes.
And all we're doing by this is reducing that 50 to 14.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
We approved it with the right to have a deduction from it, not completely.
I just wanna make sure I was on the same page.
So, Jeff, how does the delay in actually being able to occupy with inmates come into play? Are we gonna be able to recover our outside detention costs from someone?
That's an interesting question. I mean, at this point, at this point, the law of liquidated damages in Texas is kind of a flux. Our, our LD number in the contract is insufficient to cover all of our actual delay costs. We have a lot more costs than we can account for with $750 per day. Certainly, if we begin to incur additional charges longer into the calendar because we can't bring inmates in because the outside isn't finished yet, that will add to those costs. There is, there is at least one recent court case which says, not only do LDs need to be a reasonable approximation of delay damages when you enter the contract, they have to be a reasonable approximation of delay damages when you actually calculate them at the end in order to make the LDs enforceable. We may be able to choose as an election of remedies to say, we're not gonna charge you LDs. We think our LD clause is unenforceable because it doesn't meet the new test as the courts have now put out there, because we're just gonna charge you our actual delay damages, in which case we have the right to get that money back. The problem is, is that the retainedage, we're approaching the level now where the retainedage is gonna be fully consumed by all of our delay costs. And if, and if we actually exceed the amount of contract balance that we're holding on to with the value of our claim, we have to go after HMC and the surety for that difference, and that would necessarily involve litigation, which we may or may not want to do. I don't know that if we were to get involved in litigation, that they would have very good defenses. There has not been, on this project, a significant number of issues that have arisen where they could argue that there's been owner interference or overcaused delay, which is, which is unique because most of the times if a project's a year late, there's a lot of gray, there's less gray in this project.
Any other questions, comments, explanations? Has there been a motion made?
Yes, ma'am, a second.
To, to pay the?
To allow or to ratify a change order 29.
Pay application revised, yeah.
With the, with the changes that are made to the original application that was submitted to us, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the changes are handwritten, they're marked out, and then there's one, two, three, four, five, I see, is that?
Yes, sir.
Is that all of them, I believe?
There were two errors in the percentages that don't reflect the cost value, but I just marked those. On page three, there's an 86% that should have been 92, and on page four, 95% that should have been a 90. They don't reflect the dollar of value though.
Okay, and I see, but these are not initial, did you change all of these that right here?
Yes, sir.
Do you mind initialing all of this?
Oh, I didn't initial that one, okay.
Well, you signed it, but I don't see any initials.
I missed that one. And then typically, Commissioner Yarrow signs as the owner's resident, and we process it very well in the sheriff's office. I give you a copy, Judge, and I'll make sure you have a copy.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, I believe, is that correct? And granting you a certification of partial substantial completion, is that the one you wrote? Or eight? Number eight, I'm sorry, I'm saying seven. To discuss approve disproved reduced payment for pay application number 29 to deduct cost for work not in place that has been briefly approved based on projected production, and the author was Jeff Chapman and Lorraine Daley. There's been a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, number eight, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, all voting for a motion carried. Then item nine on the next page, discuss approve disproved architects preparation of change order number eight to revise exposed aggregate finish of the swale for approval of commissioner's court on April 19th, 2016 for an added cost of $250, and authorize Judge Long to sign the change order once executed by HMC. The author was Lorraine Daley.
Yes, this, Judge, this is just a formal authorization to sign this change order, we've discussed this already. This is the $250 fee that the commissioner's voted to approve back in April to, to modify the type of aggregate on the side, right, the sides of the swale.
On the bottom.
Sorry, the bottom.
Well, the bottom and the sides, to go to River Rock on the bottom.
Right.
And allow the smaller, right, we get on the side.
Right, this was, this was the authorization after they brought up the mock-up we rejected.
Okay.
We've already approved this, they've just now done the paperwork, so we seem to have a motion to authorize you to sign this change order.
Okay. Summate.
I second it. Are there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signified by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, all voting for a motion carried. Item 10 on the agenda now, discuss approve disproved architects preparation of change order number nine to reduce the construction betterment by $10,500 for the FF and E items. Additional signage and security cameras purchased directly by the county and authorize Judge Long to sign the change order once executed by HMC. The author is Lorraine Daley.
On this, this is similar to the last few change orders we've done, there are some additional signs, cameras, and furnishings and fixtures items that were needed, and instead of trying to go through HMC, it was easier for us to just coordinate with the sheriff's office and, and work directly with them, and then let the county pay directly. So, we reduced the allowance that we had in the contract for that, and we're going to let that be paid directly through the county.
Okay.
You good with this, Robert?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm calling. I thought we'd already had a motion. We hadn't had a motion on it, okay, move up, U.P.
I'll make your order.
Motion and a second to authorize the payment, authorize me to make the, sign the change order, make the payment $2,700 for the county to pay for topsoil hauling. Oh, that's the one below, we're on number 10, I'm sorry, I've lost every place I've found so far, about a hundred. Change order number nine to reduce the construction betterment by $10,500 for FF and E items. Additional signage and security cameras purchased directly by the county and authorize Judge Long to sign the change order once executed by HMC. And there's been a motion and a second, all in favor, it's signified by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, all voting for a motion carried. Number 11 on the agenda, discuss approve disproved architects preparation of change order number 10 to reduce the construction cost by $2,700 for county to pay for topsoil hauling and authorize Judge Long to sign the change order once executed by HMC. Author is Lorraine Daley.
And on this one, there's a, there's some topsoil that was hauled out to the project, and the bill hasn't been paid. Mrs. Pruski, I believe, is how you pronounce that, and in the interest of Pruski, I told Kendall, I asked Kendall if he would be willing to sign a change order to reduce his contract amount in order for the county to pay directly if, because he didn't have a written signed contract with her at that time, and he agreed to do that. So, I've been bringing it before the court, if you choose to do that, we have reduced the construction contract amount by $2,700. Kendall has agreed to it, he has signed the change order, it will allow the auditor to pay directly from the jail funds to, for the topsoil.
Summate.
I second it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, all voting for a motion carried. We're on item 12 on the agenda, update discuss status of Corinth County annexed building claims and further water testing and leak evaluation by retained experts. Author was Jeff Chapman. Other Jeff Chapman, too.
Thanks.
That's, that's this building we're in here.
That's this building. By way of an update, we, as you might recall, we have two retained experts to help us identify the problems associated with the leaks and, and other issues here in this building. The first one is a company called Building Diagnostics, which is run by a guy named David McCastro. He's an engineer. He came out here and performed water testing, investigating the source of the leaks a few months ago. He's produced a report which identifies, well, he hasn't produced a report, but he's given us information that will be in his report, which identifies the fact that there are leaks, the fact that there are problems with the design and construction of the building. But his, but his leak testing was unsuccessful in replicating the roof leak more than once, and he is only able to find one spot in the front entryway that was leaking during, during his testing. Based on the information we received from people who occupy this building, the leaks are more prevalent than just the front entryway. But he didn't really have an answer for where or why it was coming in that was satisfactory to me, that I felt would be satisfactory to the county, if I were to come back to you and say, we're going to fix this, this area, and we're going to hope that holds. The other concern I had with the findings from Building Diagnostics was that when he came out here to do the testing, the JP's office floor was dry, and so he didn't recommend doing any kind of pouring into the concrete to figure out where that water is coming from. Since that testing, and recently, that spot in the JP's office has become wet again, and we don't really know why. Whenever I've talked to anybody about this building from the county individually or in, in this Commissioners' Board, there appears to be a concern about that, certainly the JP and her staff have a concern about that. And there's been a desire to find out where the water has come from, where it's there, and how to stop it. Mr. McCastro suggested that we do a sealant on the concrete to prevent the water from coming through, which would have been a temporary fix or a partial fix, but not necessarily a diagnostic, complete repair. And I don't feel, as the county's counsel, that it's wise on a building that has the use and the life expectancy this building has, to trust a three thousand dollar sealant application to solve a problem that appears to be of major concern. So, the other expert we had hired, and we have under contract with my firm for the county, is an architect named Christine Beal, who's equally experienced in water intrusion and architectural defect cases. We talked to Christine about those testing. She was here to observe the testing and walk the building with us, the person who did the inspections. And we've also shared with her the information we've received recently showing new leaks that have recently manifested themselves throughout this building, in addition to the JP's floor. She agrees we need to do more testing. She agrees that there are different ways of testing where we could find potentially the sources of how the water is getting in, so we could stop it, and also track how the water is moving through the building, so we can identify any potential repairs that we need to have done. She has tentatively reserved, I think, the sixth and seventh of next week to come out here and do some more testing. If y'all approve the additional costs, then authorize her to go ahead and do that. In addition to doing water testing on the roof and on the front entry drainage sidewalk, front entryway, because of the issues with condensation, with the cracking of the drywall, as you see around the HVAC unit up there, the cracked tiles in the bathroom, various other issues that seem to be showing up, she believes it's worthwhile to, for us to hire a mechanical engineer to look at the HVAC system, to see if the way the system was designed is contributing to or causing additional humidity fluctuations in the building, which are creating some of the cracks, or if it may be a greater, bigger problem. So, she, she gave us some names of some mechanical engineers, and we've got some quotes from them, and they would come out here with her next week to do the testing. She is, she's going to use Pavecon as a subconsultant to provide a lift, to provide roof access to do additional water testing. They were the same entity that McCastro used to provide a lift and have access last time. The, the projected costs for testing next week, if we go ahead and have Ms. Beal, Pavecon, and the MEP engineer come out and do the testing, is a total of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. I believe we have a invoice from David McCastro for twelve thousand dollars and change for his effort in his two days of water testing the first time. This is comparable, except we're paying for an MEP engineer as well this time. And, and I would, I recommend it, because I think we need to figure out what's happening, and we don't yet know what's happening. I think it's worth taking a second shot to figure out what's going on. We do have receptive contractor and design professionals and insurance carriers already at, and I'm confident that we could, if they are, if they're willing to accept the responsibility, I'm confident we can negotiate with them to recover some or all of these costs. Also, by way of information, after McCastro shared with us the fact that he identified a roof leak, the roofing company had representatives here during that testing, and they actually tried to come out here and do some repairs, and we said, you need to wait, we don't yet know the, the complete scope of the repairs, and we need to have none, so we're not going to actually begin to work on the roof. So, we do have people who are motivated to help us fix the problem, and I think that we'll be, if we can identify the scope of the problem, I think we'll have people help us come out here and fix it. So, I think that we have a good shot of getting reimbursed for all these costs, but right now, I think it's an expense we need to incur to figure out exactly what's happening, because the leaks that we have reported, at least to my office in the last week or two weeks, are, are more along the lines of the leaks that were first reported, that were not discovered by McCastro at that point, so we need to find out what's happening. So, the recommendation that I have is for the county to authorize the expense of approximately seventeen thousand five hundred to undergo a second round of water testing and mechanical evaluation of the building next week with the retained experts that we have.
Do we have money in the budget to satisfy that?
Yes, sir. And our contingency fund.
Okay. Is there a motion to, if seventeen five, do we need to specify the amount or just pay whatever it costs?
I think just authorize the testing, and then we'll get invoices from actual time on, on served when we, when we get it done. But the estimate we've gotten from the three entities who are involved combined is seventeen hundred, seventeen thousand dollars.
Okay, and, and the motion needs to be to investigate the status of Corinth County Annex Building Claims and Further Water Testing and Leak Evaluation by Retained Experts?
I think that's right, yes.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, all voting for a motion carried.
Before you turn it over to Dale, and this is kind of a poke at you, but are you going to defend us against this ten million dollar lawsuit from this inmate?
I haven't seen a lawsuit yet, so that's probably not in my area of expertise.
Well, we all got a copy of his letter. I don't know if anything's been filed with the district clerk or not.
I think, I might, I might defer to that one, though.
He is, he is unhappy, and I'm, I'm, you know, I'm taking a little, I'm sure that he's got his own issues and what have you, but this occurred in October of nineteen sixty-six. How old were you then?
I was, I was minus nine years old. I was born seventy-five. I'll be, I'll be forty-one in two months.
You weren't even a smile on your dead face.
I wasn't. I wasn't.
Thank you.
You know, just while we're still on the same agenda, I, one thing that I haven't looked into, because I don't yet know if it's needed, the just, the JP has asked me to consider a, a essentially industrial hygienist expert to identify whether any of the discoloration in the floor that's caused by that leak is mold or is any type of carcinogen or any type of, you know, hazard to, to her and her staff's health. I haven't done that yet, I don't know how much that would cost, I haven't brought that proposal to y'all. I've not been told in my touches with, with her or her staff that there are actual health problems resulting from the leak. I think it's more of a fear, at least at this point, and it's, it's a reasonable fear, but until we have a better idea, maybe from our experts, where the water is coming from, and whether that staining is simply discoloration due to the minerals that are in the concrete leaching upward as opposed to something that might be harmful, I don't know that we need to spend the money to have that service performed. If we get down the road in a few weeks after this next round of testing, and we find that we still have severity concerns or questions, I might come back to you with some additional proposals. But right now, I haven't done that, but you should be aware that that request has been made.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Is that all of your...
The last thing is the, is the final item, which is Blacktopper.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's it for the annex.
Okay. Item thirteen on the agenda, discuss approve, disapprove, final change order for Blacktopper to finalize court agreement at May the tenth, two thousand and sixteen, Court meeting. Authors Jeff Chapman and Dale Stack.
Yeah, so, at that meeting on May tenth, we discussed this final change. If you'll recall, Dale and I had worked with Blacktopper's counsel, Lee Elms, to come to an agreement on the final amount to be paid to them. In principle, we had an agreement, we approved, the county approved the payment in the amount that was agreed to by Blacktopper and by us, by, based on Dale's recommendations. We now have contacted Naismith, who is our engineer of record for the project. They've prepared for us this packet of closeout documentation, which they gave me yesterday afternoon, so I didn't have a chance to get it in your packet. But it basically, it memorializes the agreement. I'll let Dale address exactly what's in here, but we already have an approval for the amount. We just need today a motion to go ahead and authorize you, Judge, to sign these, these other documents after we get samples back from Blacktopper.
What Naismith has provided is actually two pay estimates. One is to pay the quantity for the change order that we discussed that purchased one thousand fifteen yards of cropping rock that was delivered to the project but not used, and so we are paying the contractor the invoice price that he paid, so there's no profit, there's no, no additional cost there. So, the first one is to approve that modification to the contract, and then the second one would be to make the final payment to the contractor of the fifty-seven thousand dollars of the retainage that we had withheld from the contract during, during the work. And with those two payments, this contract will be final, and the work is complete.
On what we have here, Paddy, I see a contract change order, decrease, a final amount of twenty-eight, eight, eighty-five, forty-one?
Correct.
Kind of walk us through that and down that page, where it says closeout documents, if you would.
The first three items there that are listed, the forty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-two, the twenty-six thousand eight hundred and five, and then the four thousand four hundred are reductions in quantities. If you look at the following page from that, you'll notice that item number one, on the far right-hand side, is the corresponding forty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is the twenty-six thousand eight hundred and five, and then item number four is the four thousand four hundred. Those are deductions from the contract in that the quantities we paid for were less than the estimated items of the original contract. So, that's work that was not performed, therefore not paid for. Then the last item, the forty-eight thousand nine hundred and two dollars, that is item number five on the second sheet, which is the additional one thousand fifteen ton of rock that we purchased, which was not in the original contract, therefore it's a, a positive to the contract. And when you take all of those numbers, added and subtracted, it actually comes up with a reduction of the original contract of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-five. So, there was some work, if you notice, that estimate number two does have a positive thirty-eight thousand one hundred and six, that we would be paying Blacktopper's off of this, this item. There was additional work done that had not been paid for yet at the time, so once you do all the math, it, it still comes out to a positive thirty-eight thousand dollars that we would actually be paying him on the contract.
Jeff, are you and Dale satisfied that this is appropriate, correct? You're happy with him?
From my review of the limited documentation that was available, it appears that all the quantities have been measured correctly, and that the items listed on this estimate are correct and accurate. Yes.
Yeah, and I'm satisfied with, with you now. I'm satisfied with the amounts.
I would move that we, excuse me, has this change order got a number on it?
Well, it's actually the closeout documents.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think they actually...
Change order number one, but it's a package of closeout documents, so what we need is...
We'll call it closeout.
Yeah, call it closeout, and what we need is an authorization to, to approve and have the judge sign it, but before the judge signs it, I'm going to have Blacktopper sign it. So, I'll bring it back to the court to have somebody to authorize it now, we can do that without further meeting.
I would move that the court authorize the county judge, Mr. Long, to sign the closeout document as presented for Blacktopper's.
Second.
Upon the approval, Jeff.
Upon the final approval and signatures.
Okay, motion and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, all voting for a motion carried.
That's it?
That's it. Motion to adjourn, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, signify by...
Okay. Good thing. You two have the list?